This time I call the May meeting of the County Commission to order. I'm going to ask the Director of the Office of Emergency Services, Director Casey Broom, to lead us now in vacation, followed by Commissioner Collins on the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we love you, we thank you for this day. We thank you for even the challenging things you've put in front of us. We ask that you bless this meeting, that you guide us and lead us, and help us to serve you better. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indelict, and just as this
Members of the board, you've received the minutes of the previous meetings. Is thou motioned that the minutes be approved as printed and sent to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Wade, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item five, the approval of the agenda, is thou motioned that the agenda be approved as printed?
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item six, departmental report, six A, the Office of Emergency Services, Director Broom.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to be here, and Commissioners, and the community. It is my honor to be here. You have my written report. Wanted to touch base on the driving simulator, Chairman, you got to come out and see it the other day, it's a real good program. We've had personnel from the office trained to be instructors in it, and we will be training law enforcement, as well as the fire departments. It's a defensive driving course, more or less, it teaches good habits, and we're real excited to have it there. It's a $220,000 piece of equipment that ACCG has provided to us to do that training. You know, y'all welcome to come by the office anytime and have a look at it, it's pretty neat, we're trying to. Hopefully we'll go towards a discount on our risk, our workers' comp insurance through risk management, it came through ACCG Risk Management, that's how it got to us. So we've really been working on that. Other than that, I have nothing to add to the report, unless there are questions.
Okay, any questions, Director Broom?
Comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wade?
Just like to comment and make, maybe praise Director Broom some. If you would, just sort of give me a little bit of explanation of actually different things that you do. For example, I know that you're our Director for Emergency Services and Ambulance Services. You're our county fire chief, and do a lot of coordination with other counties in case of a major fire problem. You're our point of contact, but in my classes in Savannah, this last Sunday, a lot was made out of the emergency national disaster programs. And it says, if you haven't had a national disaster, you will. So I believe you're our point of contact on that also, dealing with FEMA and all the emergency agencies, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Our department is structured, well, first of all, the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners holds the authority to declare a state of emergency in our county. The Governor holds the authority to declare a state of emergency in any county, or the entire state. I am the person that the Chairman depends on to operate the Emergency Operations Center, as well as maintain and update our emergency operations plan. I'm also the Emergency Medical Services Director, I'm also Chief of the county's only county-operated fire department. The volunteer fire departments are, of course, there, and they have their own chiefs. And I am the county's safety coordinator. Those are the titles that I'm aware of, unless the Chairman gives me another one tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, I thought it'd be important just to bring out all the things that you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Wade, one of the things that goes on a little bit, I don't want to say behind the scenes, but that's exactly what it is. Anytime a function is going on in the county, whether it's big trail rides at Bussie Point, or the Bluegrass Festival at night, Jeff and Cheers, the law states who is set up on everything. That's the fact, if we have a disaster, that's the only time I can spend money without y'all's approval, I don't even have to worry about the budget. Law provides for that, but let me just give you an example. When we have big rains, storms, or whatever, the Mayor, and myself, and the Sheriff, and the Chief of Police, and of course, Director Broom, and Director Seymour, Director Arnett, and two or three others, we meet, we probably had to meet since I've been back four or five times. But sided with 2,800 people down at the park, the weather was doing what it was doing, he was constantly, I talked to him by phone several times, but he was constantly texting me and the Sheriff, to let us know whether or not we needed to tell them to shut it down and people go hide, so a lot of that kind of stuff. You know, he's watching it, and then he calls me, and then we get, usually with Director Seymour, if we got something, be sure that trucks are fueled up, and gravel's into trucks, and shovels, and-
Generators are full.
Generators are ready, and chainsaws are ready. Every time anything goes, it looks like we're gonna have a bad problem, then we always communicate, side of this, or side of this, to try to keep people safe. And then if it's a big disaster, airplane crash, then, you know, we would all be out at the thing, and that brings in even more people. Telephone Company, Georgia Power, REA, you know, it states who has to come in, depending on the disaster, but we're always in contact when it's a bad weather thing, particularly if it's a lot of, if it's a football game, or worrying about whether they're gonna have school or something. And normally, even when Dr. Light makes the decision to close the schools, he's done it when we're out there together looking at what we, what all the state's saying to him. But it's a lot that goes on behind the scene, as he mentioned a while ago, that simulator. It's right neat, I went out there the other afternoon, and he was driving crazy, and I thought the whole thing was about to turn over, I was trying to hold on. It's a neat thing, I think it'd be good, I don't know if schools got tested where they let you bring some children, school students out there, but it's neat, but I know all you public safety people, city police, county sheriffs, and all these are doing. Any other questions, Director Broom? If not, thank you. Six B, is the Recreation Department Director Glaze, you know he's not here, T-ball in Little League's going on, he has a written report of some things in his report that's going on out of the Recreation Department. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a-
Commissioner Clyde.
I like having that Advisory Board minutes in here, that fills us in a lot.
Yeah, it does.
And tells us a lot more about what's going on, so that's a good addition, helpful.
It is. Anything else? Six C, Finance Department Director Arnett.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you have my written reports, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Director Arnett? If not, six D, is the Public Works Department Director Seymour.
Chairman, Members of the Board, you have my written reports, don't have anything to add to the reports, I do have one item that's gonna take your action before we move on, but I will take questions if you have them on my reports, if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions from the Director's report on Public Works? If not, thank you.
I got, I got one item that needs some action by this Board, that I'd like to bring to you now. As you all know, we are a part of a regional T-Sploost that was put into place, and so-
Director Seymour, is that item number nine on here? Transportation Investment Act?
My apologies, I thought I was gonna-
Okay. That's where you all at, right? That's the one you were speaking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time we're gonna go into a public hearing.
I need to make one comment.
Commissioner Clyde.
Real quick. Since Director Seymour works so close with the new outfit, we go to Georgia Freshwater Campgrounds, I got a call from a guy who does fishing tournaments a lot, and he works out of Cherokee, and he was real concerned about the check-in point being so close, and the traffic backing up. And anyway, Kermit, I'd like to say thank you, he's not here, and he usually is, but he went the extra mile, met with this guy, they sat down, and went through the problems they were having, and the best way to solve them, and now Kermit gets notified when there is a big bass tournament coming, and I make sure that the boats just come on in without stopping at the checkpoint, and line up beside them, the road, before they check them all in, and make sure things are well taken care of. And I mean, it was good that they could just work together, because the guy was excited at first, he called me back, all congratulating everybody, appreciating the effort and all. And what was really funny, the day after he called me, I went through Cherokee early the next morning on my way to work, and there was two boats already had launched, and one guy was backing his boat in. Kermit came in right after me, and neither three of those guys paid, it's a little Honda box, so anyway, Kermit's working hard to make sure we get dues out.
Yes, sir, he's doing, I think he's doing a good job.
But thank you for working with him, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate what Kermit does for us, so.
Any other questions, Director Seymour? Item seven, this is a public hearing, planning and zoning, is thou motioned that we go into a public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, we're in a public hearing. We have a applicant, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. On May the 6th of 2019, the Planning Commission heard the following request. Mr. Al Arthur with Sand Hill Retrievers, map parcel 41, map 41 parcel 50, which is 3492 Augusta Highway 220 West, consists of 50 acres, which is currently zoned at A1. Mr. Arthur is applying for rezoning from A1 agriculture to C2 commercial with a special use permit to operate a kennel. As you're aware, Mr. Arthur is a second generation, that has been running the kennel out on 220 for quite some time. This kennel was grandfathered in in 2003, when the county ordinance zoning took effect. However, Mr. Arthur is expanding his footprint of the business, which requires him to come back before planning and zoning and rezone that piece of property. And he would fall out of the grandfather clause and into zoning. My Board heard his request, and voted unanimously to recommend approval with the condition that's noted at the bottom, which is approval of the zoning with a special use include the following conditions, if the property use changes, it must be brought back before planning and zoning, which means that it can operate as a kennel as long as it is a kennel, but if that use changes from a kennel to something else, then the C2 would go away, and they would have to come back before planning and zoning to rezone for whatever use they wanted at that time. But it was a unanimous decision to rezone it.
I see Mr. Arthur's here, Mr. Arthur, would you like to speak? If you do, come to the podium, please, state your name.
My name is Al Arthur, and we're just expanding our kennel to 60 kennels, all indoor, they're all being closed, and it's a pet retreat, and we'll probably draw dogs from basically all over the southeast, it's being endorsed by Orvis Outdoor Company, which was founded in 1856.
Are there any questions to, hold on, Mr. Arthur, in case they have some questions. Is there any questions to Mr. Arthur? Okay, still, hold on, is anybody here to speak for or against this rezoning? We're in a public hearing, if you want to speak for it or against it. If not, is there anybody on the Board that would like to ask any questions? Commissioner Wade?
Have we, I know you've been there a long time, but Director Seymour, have we had any complaints about the kennel?
As long as I've been with the county, we have not had any complaints whatsoever. Now, there was a gentleman, Schultz, I believe was his last name, that showed up at the planning and zoning meeting Monday night, and his only concern was that he heard the dogs as they are now, he could hear them, he backs up to that property, but as it was explained to him that these new kennels would be indoors, he was perfectly fine with it. That's the only person in the, you know, in the 16 years I've been with the county I've ever heard complain.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion that we accept the recommendation for planning and zoning Board to rezone this from A1 to C2 with the conditions?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Wade, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Gentlemen, I just gave you, Mr. Arthur, this, you know what I'm talking about, I just passed it to the Commissioners. Do you care if I give one to the Lincoln Journal? I think that would give you some idea. I had really not realized how big this was until side of the afternoon at the Bluegrass Festival, I sit by your wife, and I found out what was going on, but I thought, I think it's worth, worthy particularly for some of the things that are going on in agribusiness in Lincoln County with the new plant we're getting, this call Southeast Georgia, out there, that the horse business that we have now in Lincoln County, I think we have four, and of course, the authors have been, as you know, very, very successful, probably in the top two or three dog trainers in the nation. People come here from all over the country, as far as Washington, Wisconsin, I think even out of the country, to here. To tell you what, just the kennels that the authors have had for years, in the last two and a half years, we know of four people that have bought property here, somewhere in the 300 acre range. Three houses have been built, a permit's being pulled, I think now, about to be for another house, about a 3,600 square foot house. These people are moving in here, having dogs trained, some of them here for four or five months, some of them maybe a little longer. Colors Inn Motel, last year, approximately 300 nights, rooms were rented to people in the businesses bringing their dogs to Lincoln County to be trained, so it's really, it's been a very big impact on the county for a long time. If you think it's not, talk to the people at the motel, and some of the merchants, particularly Fast House, David Dawkins can tell you what it does for him. I just compliment what y'all have done for so long that nobody really even knows, and you probably want it that way, and me not telling it, but I did ask him if I could give this little talk, and he said I could after the zoning, but not for, I think if you look at it, you can see that that's gonna be a tremendous asset. We're not talking about a few hundred thousand dollar investment, we're talking about a few million dollar investment. It's something that I know most of you have heard, I hadn't, but I hope some of you have, Orvis. That's a company that's been in business since 1856, I saw it on the website, that they have partnered with, they sell a lot of things, they have a clothing line, I didn't realize that, like, they have a clothing line, where'd you tell me they were, Vermont?
They're out in Manchester, Vermont.
Okay.
They have a store, I think everywhere all over the world, but they have one in Saracen.
Yeah, that'll tell you how high line they all were, they got the stores at Saracen, so. As he told you, this was a pet spa, and if you have friends in Augusta, they will meet you at the airport, or meet you in Augusta, or anywhere, and I say airport, I literally mean that. You got people that will fly their pets here, and leave them with them to be kennelled. This is a total separate operation from this training, dog training business, this is entirely different. I'm fixing to make Jackie laugh, but my understanding is, and you can step back up to that microphone if I'm not telling it right, but I think that all the pets will have access to TVs in their room, where they can watch TV. They will have a bedtime story read to them at night, they will be walking and swimming and pet walks, and they'll even come out to the car and pick it up and bring it in for you if you don't want to come in, $10 fee. But this is, this, here in Orvis, this is the only place in the United States, this is where it starts, and you're just gonna have to do a story on it, cave, to where people can really know what this is gonna be. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be the showcase of kennels, is that right? And if you look at that picture, you can see the front of it, what it's gonna be. And another thing, before I quit saying this, the local contractor, Spratlin Contracting, will be doing the building of this, this building, and that's when I realized it was bigger than what I thought it was, because, you know, they don't want to bid on little stuff no more, so when I heard Spratlin was the contractor. But anyway, we congratulate you on your business, y'all have been very successful with many years, your daddy's been in it probably, what, 40, 50 years? And to be making the investment that you're making on this, in Lincoln County, that the whole nation's gonna be looking at, and hopefully they'll be building some others across the country, that they will do, and people will be coming in looking at this. So I think it's a tremendous asset for the county, and we commend you, and we just glad you chose to do it here instead of somewhere else, you could, you could've gone anywhere to do the connections y'all have. So again, thinking if there's anything that the county can do, to work with y'all and help you, just let us know. Thank you, Mr. Arthur.
Mr. Chairman, you should've told me all of that before I asked the question.
That's the reason I waited. Did you have something you want to say?
I was gonna ask, Al, is he the one reading the bedtime stories to the-
Elizabeth.
Oh.
In Ruby Colours. Well, it's amazing what people spend on the animals now, so he's taking applications for whatever weekend y'all want. Is thou motioned that we come out of the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and we're out of our public hearing, back in the regular meeting, item number eight, we'd love for you to stay, but if you want to leave, we understand. Revenue Bond Continuation Disclosure, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. As you are aware, in 2015, we did some consolidation of some debt that we had with the Water Department with some revenue bonds. Part of that process, the law requires us to do what we call continuing disclosure of our financials every year. Back in, I believe it was, might've been October, y'all approved using Springstead to do that continuing disclosure for $2,500, previously we'd been paying another company $5,000, and I brought to y'all Springstead, which I think is doing it for $2,500. Springstead has actually been bought out by Baker Tilly Company, and so by doing so, they're required to void the continuing disclosure from Springstead, and then reissue one from Baker Tilly. So that's what this agreement is for, it is actually just a cancellation from Springstead because they're out of business, they've been bought out, and redone with Baker Tilly, which is the company that acquired Springstead. So we're dealing with the same people, the same amount of money, so all it is is just to transfer from Springstead to Baker Tilly. And this would give the Chairman the authorization-
Is this an annual thing?
It isn't.
I mean, we have to do it annually, whether or not, it just happened this time it sold to another company, which is not unusual.
That is correct, yes.
What's the motion?
I need a motion for you to be able to sign this agreement with Baker Tilly, given you the authority to sign that.
All right, you've heard the Director on the Revenue Bond Continuation Disclosures, thou motioned that we approve it, and give me the authority to sign it on behalf of the county.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Wade, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Transportation Investment Act Resolution, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, we are in a regional T-Sploost with Department of Transportation, and we receive a 25% portion of that money that's allocated to Lincoln County as a discretionary funds, which is what we use a good bit to patch and pave some of our county roads. In doing that, that was a 10-year T-Sploost, and so it took effect in 2012 and run through 2022. Myself and the Chairman have been attending several quarterly meetings of the T-Sploost Roundtable, and it is time, and we've been working the last couple of meetings on extending the next 10-year T-Sploost that will go out for vote by the people in our region. But this Board needs to sign and pass a resolution that we are on board with the remaining counties in the region as a regional T-Sploost, which gives us a lot of benefits in doing so, it allows us to be able to match our LMIG with 10%, not 30%, if you're not in a regional, you're required to do 30%. Not only that, if we weren't a regional participant, then we would not be eligible for the 25% discretionary funds as well. So what we're asking for is that y'all approve the resolution to join in the regional T-Sploost at this time, which will run, I believe it's gonna run in 2023, and go all the way through 2033, I believe is the next 10-year Sploost.
Second, where it asks, tells you it's 14 counties, and it gives you the name of the counties that's currently in it. When we were at the last Roundtable meeting, all but three counties, Richmond, Columbia, and Lincoln, I think, the only three that had not signed and sent it in, really it was a little bit of waiting to see what Richmond was gonna do, or Columbia was gonna do, in it. But anyway, it was agreed to that by 10 counties, and Richmond and Columbia also, has said they would continue to be a part of it, and we, I think we need to be a part of it too. I don't know what we'd do if we didn't have it, to be frank with you. So I guess we need a motion that states, giving me the authority to sign the resolution that would keep Lincoln County in with the other 13 counties, to make the CSRA region of the Transportation Investment Act.
Correct.
We continue on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, I think that's one of the best things to have to transportation in a long, long time, I hope we continue.
Now, second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any other discussion? Commissioner Wade?
Director Seymour, about how much money does this equate to annually?
Annually, about $625,000 to $650,000, depending on sales tax, but somewhere in the 625 range, which over a 10-year period is about $6.2 million of money that we would not have unless you raised property taxes. I mean, it's, and that's just a 25% allocation that we get as discretionary funds that are handed down straight to each county. Now, there's also a 75% fund that goes through the, through the Executive Committee that we will actually be working in the next couple of months, getting some- projects together that we'll do out of that seventy-five that will not affect that twenty-five percent. So it's a tremendous asset to a county of our size. It's, I don't know what we, as the chairman said, I don't know what we would do if we didn't have it. We'd be in, we'd be in trouble road-wise, I mean, we're still battling the appeal battle, but without this money, we wouldn't even be in the battle.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
If I might, is this tied to the SDS?
It is, it is not, no, sir.
Okay.
L-MIG is, but...
Grant, grant monies are, this is not grant money, this is sales tax.
L-MIG would be, and that's gonna be three hundred and fifty thousand, this year we've been told, it's up from three thirty-two to three fifty, so, but this is not. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. Item ten is Bateman contract extension with the Senior Citizens Program to provide the meals direct to blood.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is just a continuation of the grant, this is where we get our meals from, for the senior center, and it's with Bateman out of Augusta, and they bring our meals to us every day, and we'd like to ask, I'd like to ask y'all just to sign that contract, please.
And it's the same, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it's the same.
Okay, and you see that, what the meal costs, the delivery fee and that type of thing, for twelve months, from July the first, two thousand nineteen, through June the thirty, two thousand twenty, that we just renew any contract at the same price? And most of this is paid, very little of it comes from local funds, most of it's paid, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The meals are four forty-five, and then they pay four dollars, and then the county pays forty-five cents.
Yeah, forty-five cents, I was looking to see if I had it on here. Anyway, it's continuation to keep the Senior Citizens Program fed. Is there a motion that gives me the authority to sign the contract for another year with Bateman?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Wade, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. Item number eleven, alcoholic beverage license, this is a new license for Willie Max Class C, Clerk McKellar.
Yes, sir, Mrs. Warren has met all the requirements for a Class C license.
Okay, they have met all the requirements for their Class C liquor, beer, and wine on premises. Willie Max is Silk Creek Restaurant, for those that don't know what Willie Max is. Is there a motion that we grant this Class C license to Willie Max, to Miss Penny Warren doing business, meeting Willie Max?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second, Mr. Chairman. Motion under second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. Item number twelve is the update on the drug and alcohol policy, Clerk McKellar.
Yes, sir, the Georgia Department of Transportation has requested that all Georgia Transit subrecipients for Section fifty-three eleven and fifty-three oh seven programs to update their drug and alcohol policy to include the two thousand eighteen opioid addition to drug panels and the two thousand nineteen random drug testing annual percentage increase to reflect the FTA regulatory changes.
Okay, we've got, if we're gonna continue, we got, we got to pass this, with these additions added to our policy. Most of these drivers, I think on this one, on the, on the FTA, Federal Transit Administration, is senior citizens transit drivers, and we have two from the Road Department that have to do it, because they work on them, they got to drive them back and forth. Okay, is there a motion that we, give me the authority, I don't know if I need the authority, is there a motion that we adopt the new...
You'll have to sign it. You have to sign it.
There are motions that give me the authority to sign the new updated Federal Transportation Drug Act.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
That's second.
That's second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Wade. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. Item thirteen, alcoholic ordinances, we, this will be the second reading, we had the first reading last month of Brew Pub and Brewerys, Attorney Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, this is the second reading, and the commission can vote to approve it after the second reading. The first proposed ordinance is Brew Pubs and Breweries, and that says, Section A, required, no individual shall be permitted to own or operate a brew pub without first obtaining a proper license from the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, and each brew pub license holder shall comply with all other applicable state, local license requirements. B, definitions, following definition shall apply in the interpretation and enforcement of this ordinance. One, brew pub, any eating establishment in which beer or malt...
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
This has been on the county's website for two months, we had the first reading, which we did suspend there. Again, if it's not objection, I would like to ask for the suspension of the reading of this ordinance, and that we have a motion to adopt the alcoholic beverage ordinance, Chapter ten, Article two, licensing brew pubs and breweries in Lincoln County.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Thirteen, B is a brewer license, second reading, now this is the one, on the other one, we just did that, where we could go ahead and get it into county ordinances if we have one. B, brewer license, the second reading we're doing is the one that's actually going down to Ed Kena's old store.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. This is under brewer license, A, license required, a brewer license from the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County is required before a manufacturer will be allowed to manufacture malt beverages within the boundaries of Lincoln County, Georgia, except that a brew pub is not required to obtain a brewer license, but must obtain a brew pub license. B, on premises consumption, in the event a brewer license holder exercises its right to sell malt beverages for on premises consumption, said manufacturer shall first...
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, Chairman.
Mr. Arthur would like for you to come read this one night, to his pets, I'm satisfied that I put him to sleep. Okay, without objection, I'd ask to suspend the reading of the brewer license, this is the second reading, it began read last week, it was also suspended, it's on the county website. Is there a motion that we adopt alcoholic beverage, Chapter ten, Article two, the section will be put in by many codes, my understanding, when they do it, when they update ours at the end of every year? Need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. Let me ask the clerk a question, do we need to go ahead and, we need to vote on this price too, don't we?
Yes, sir, but...
Oh, is that automatically in there?
It is in the ordinance, but it's in a different section. But talking with Ben earlier, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance, it could just be part of the application.
Part of the application fee? Okay, we're looking at the brewery license, which we just approved for the guy that's gonna open it up as a, new it'd be a thousand dollars, and the renewed would be seven fifty, and the on premise consumption would be five hundred, so this year it'd be a total of fifteen hundred, and every year after that is twelve hundred and fifty.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and you say that could just be a part without a vote?
Yes, sir, that could be a part, that could be set by the chairman, by the commission each year, however you want to do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've already voted on the other one, but item C is the outside consumption, second reading, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is designed for people congregating outside of an establishment after they have actually left the establishment. Says, A, it is prohibited for customers to leave the premises with open alcoholic beverages, and it is the licensee's responsibility to ensure that no open beverages are sold and carried out. B, it is prohibited for the customers to gather outside any alcoholic beverage establishment and consume alcoholic beverages. C, it is prohibited for any manager or any employee to allow persons to gather outside any alcoholic beverage establishment and consume alcoholic beverages. D, it should be unlawful for any person to consume any alcoholic beverages while in the confines of any motor vehicle when the vehicle is parked in the parking lot of any alcoholic beverage establishment.
Okay, we read that one in its entirety. Is there a motion that we adopt the outside consumption?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That motion is our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Commissioner Collins.
Do we have any establishments in the county at this time that would be grandfathered, everybody, or does everybody in the county at this, once we pass this, have to adhere to it?
This would apply to all folks who leave an establishment throughout the county.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. We have, Ms. Emma Smith has moved from the county and has sent a letter resigning as a member of the Department of Family and Children's Services Board. I think that term, I don't think, I know that term expires on June the thirty of two thousand twenty-one, and that is the at-large appointment, which is recommended by me, and I have recommended that Ms. Elizabeth P. Arthur be appointed to serve the remaining term of Ms. Emma Smith, and I need a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
That motion by Commissioner Wade, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried. I would like to mention, though, maybe by next month, Commissioner Collins, if you'll look there, we need to reappoint, appoint whatever you want to do, Renee Guthrie, and Commissioner Clyde, if you look, Ms. Frey this time, so, okay. Yeah, y'all, I know you didn't realize that, and I didn't either, just the other day.
Mr. Chairman, is that for the Family and Children Services?
It is. We'll remind you to.
And I also have, need an appointment for the Recreation Board.
You will?
Since you took my appointing.
Beth Antinakis has moved the Recreation Board to the Development Authority Board, so we'll have to replace that one, and, okay, is there a motion, we adjourn?
I'll make that motion too, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and motion's carried, and we stand adjourned. Jeff and Sher East is singing, begins in about twenty minutes.